We're going to open the Sherwood City Council for a 7 o'clock city council regular meeting. I'm calling to order. Now, we'll stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Middleton.
Here.
Counsel President Henderson.
Here.
Counsel Grant.
Here.
Counsel Folsom.
Here.
Counsel Butterfield.
Here.
Counsel Langer, are you with us?
Here.
Thank you. Counsel Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with the consent agenda. Approval of June 17, 2014, city council meeting minutes. Resolution 2014-047, approving city recorder's canvassing of the returns of the May 20, 2014 Washington County elections and directing the city recorder to enter the results in the record. Resolution 2014-051, appointing Naomi Bilov to the Budget Committee. Resolution 2014-052, appointing Susan Kloss to the Budget Committee. Resolution 2014-053, appointing Annie Jensen to the Budget Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to-
I move consent.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we remove Resolutions C, D, and E and table them until a date not certain so that we can request staff to bring back the data, the date of applications for these Budget Committee potential members, the number of applications that were received at that time, who did the interview committee consist of, what was the process after the interviews were done, when were the applicants contacted and notified that there was not only an opening but they had been chosen, and whether or not they were able to fulfill this obligation, and if there is indeed an administrative policy about how our boards and commissions are seated.
I'll second.
That's my motion.
I'd like to vote on each one as we do that. Is that?
Oh, I move that all three of the Resolutions C, D, and E. That's the motion on the floor.
There we go. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. The motion was, if I heard it correctly, was a motion to table the-
To a date not certain.
To a date not certain, C, D, and E. A motion to table is not debatable, so it's just voted on. If it's the will of the body, you can divide it into three separate ones. That would require the consent of the motion maker and the person who made the second, though.
Okay, motion on the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? No?
Nay.
All right, our next is citizen comments. I have two forms, if anybody else would like to... Oh, I have four forms.
Mayor, we have an amended agenda. Do we want to-
You need to vote on the remainder of the items under consent?
Yeah. Yes, thank you. So, may I make a motion to vote on the amended agenda items which are covered under consent under A and B?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pose? None. Citizen comments. Nancy Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make this quick. Thank you so much for your time. I would like to say that I watched the last council meeting on YouTube, and I don't know, maybe you guys need to bring that psychologist back in because I really was ashamed of the city of Sherwood once again. We're not making it in the newspaper, as at least the local newspaper is a great place to live anymore because it seems like we're under federal investigation for a number of different things. And if you actually Google the school system and go back a ways, you'll find all kinds of wonderful things that go on here in Sherwood. So, please become model tonight and like each other for just a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Lana Cole.
Lana Cole, Sherwood resident. I just wanted to take some time and thank the city and the police department, as well as TVFR, for the fine work that we came together and did the cruise in 2014. It was an honor, and I was proud to be part of Sherwood. And also want to thank the city for allowing us to have the annual dinner for the chamber in the middle of Old Town. It was really a neat and great event. So, thank you.
Jay Kloss.
Robert James Kloss, 2221 Southwest Pacific Highway. I went to the bar association recently and asked about Barry Elster and Hammond's relationship with the city in that we'd send down the only contract I knew you signed. And then I showed them some minutes where Mr. Crean says over and over he's the city attorney. Now, this is a very interesting dilemma because if he's the city attorney, look in here in the Ethics Committee, he's a public official. Now, that presents a really more interesting problem because part of the problem with your budget is that you're not honest. Now, we all know that. Government uses a lot of smoke and mirrors, but you're not honest. And you hide the things you don't want us to see, and that's the way it has to be. But the problem is that if a public official... Now, I'm not sure about Crean anymore because he used to be a partner, I believe, and he's of council now. But if they have a 401K, for instance, and they do work for the city, and the money goes into the 401K, and he sits here and directs it to that law firm, my understanding, both from ethics and, of course, I could be wrong, and the bar took me a long time to catch on because I couldn't figure out what was going on, this law firm is deemed to say we have a potential of an actual conflict of interest. And that's where your problems always start, is these so-called structural conflicts of interest. You build somebody that needs something. That's unfortunate. We all do. But then they build it into the decision. Now, what I'm asking is how do you have a public official sitting here that would help something on a request for proposal for a new attorney when it's written basically to favor their law firm? That's a potential conflict of interest. Now, out of fairness to everybody, because I know our council would never do anything like that. You'd never pass a resolution or amend a citizen. You're above that. Why don't I try starting ethical complaints, starting with the request for proposal for a new attorney? Because the least we could do is open that bidding to a fair representation without having the specifications standard so far they dictate who you hire. I think your last time you'll see an indication, because people like Ramis Crew and Corrigan, I don't even believe, applied, that's a good indication they didn't want to waste their time. Now, that's a problem, and of course, we like that because just imagine, imagine this, Chad, if you had a lawyer in your law firm, went to a meeting in front of Dan Cooper and people and called a citizen, quote, "batshit crazy," and then took one of your lawyers two days before a double mastectomy, and took that guy on the property, that woman on the property, and tried to get that woman prosecuted. That's pretty serious if it's a public official because you understand that gets into some pretty substantial violations. So, I'm assuming you're all going to applaud my effort because the last thing we want to do is not have 14th Amendment compliance. And this doesn't aim anything at your... But I'm getting a little tired at directing when you hire out kind of consultants. Thank you.
Colleen Swihart.
My name's Colleen Swihart. I live here in Sherwood, have been a resident for 14 years. And please educate me if this is not the proper time to talk about it, but I wanted to talk about the Sherwood Dog Park, and I wasn't sure if that was an agenda item tonight. No, okay. I just wanted to state that I typically drive to other cities in order to exercise my dogs and give them some socialization. And for a town that has made so much in the news about the livability of the city and how wonderful it is here, it's a shame we don't have a dog park. So, I'd really encourage you, and if there are other people here for the dog park too, I'm not sure, but I'd encourage you to give it consideration and try to find some funding for it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last form I have now. Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to make? Okay, moving on. Trimet update on local enhancement plan. Tom Mills.
Mr. Mayor and council, as Mr. Mills is coming up to present, I just wanted to give a quick context. As you know, we've been working with other neighboring jurisdictions in the southwest corridor area on the southwest corridor plan. One element of that is enhanced local transit service. And so, Trimet is working on that, and Tom Mills is here to present where they're at, what they're doing, what they found, and get the council into the loop.
Thank you, Julia, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for having me speak to you today. If you... Once again, my name is Tom Mills. I'm a senior planner with Trimet. Some of you may recall I came and spoke to you in October of 2013 about this project. We were just kicking off. We've made a lot of progress, and what I wanted to do today is share with you what we've learned and what some of our recommendations are. There we go. Just to remind you, the service enhancement plan is a meaningful, what we call a meaningful public engagement for creating a shared vision for making transit better. Really, what it is, is it's a long-range plan for improved transit service in the southwest region. And when I say southwest region, I mean Sherwood, Tuolton, Tigard, Durham, King City, southwest Portland, Westland, Lake Oswego. And, you know, we know that the region is growing. We know that we're coming out of the recession. There are more jobs. People are trying to get to those jobs. The region has actually grown faster than Trimet has been able to keep up with. And there has been a lot of interest in new transit service throughout the region, particularly here in southwest. And so, this project really is about trying to find a way to do that. Back in October, I showed you a slide similar to this. At the time, the red box was at the very top where we were conducting public outreach and researching existing plans, collecting a lot of travel pattern data and census data. We then took all that information, and we kind of went back to Trimet and huddled around it and said, "Well, what is this telling us? What are the themes here? What's the story?" And based on that, what we learned, we developed a draft plan, and I want to stress it is only a draft because we want to gather feedback on it, and that's where we are in the process today. We want to hear from you and your public about, you know, what you think of our ideas. And in fact, I'm hoping this weekend to be at the Robin Hood Festival, talking to your residents, I hope on Saturday, getting their input on what they think. Finally, we may have to actually go through a couple rounds of, you know, Trimet taking feedback, making some revisions, bringing it back to the public, getting more input, making some revisions. But finally, we hope by early 2015, we will have general consensus throughout the southwest part of the region about what they would like the future transit service to look like. As I mentioned, we looked at a lot of data. We're very fortunate in the tools that we have available to us. We're really able to see where people live, where they work, map that information, not only just where the jobs are and where the residents are, but of these residents, where do they work? And of these workers, where do they live? And so, now we can really try to start to make some connections that we never could before. We also held a number of community meetings, one of which was in this very room in January, and I believe the mayor attended that meeting as well. We rolled out maps with the public and had some markers, and we asked people to tell us where, you know, they want to see new or improved transit service. We also held some kind of focused meetings, particularly with communities of people who don't, who won't normally show up to a big public meeting. And that includes meetings with people who have limited English skills, people to youth and seniors as well. All in all, we had over 200 people participate in our community meetings. But on top of that, we've also been holding individual stakeholder meetings, both with the city, but also with the Sherwood Chamber of Commerce I met with, with employers, with neighborhood groups, et cetera, throughout southwest. Real quick, just to give you a quick example, in those, the meetings in which we rolled out the maps and we asked people to draw on the map and tell us what they'd like to see, this is kind of a compilation of all those results. And, you know, in the Sherwood area, what we're seeing is there was interest in service to the YMCA, as well as interest to the industrial area between Sherwood and Tuolton and downtown Tuolton, and of course, Bridgeport Village. Finally, we also conducted a survey. We had over 1,800 respondents in the survey. We were, you know, we had hard copy online for the first time ever. We did it on Facebook, not just in English, but in Spanish and Vietnamese as well, and really got some great responses. So, what did we learn? This map is really kind of going to tell you the story of transit service in the southwest part, and that is, at the very beginning, you know, a long time ago, when Trimet was really kind of first setting up, Portland was the primary job center in the region. And the service was designed primarily to get people in and out of Portland every day. But as we know, over time, new job centers emerged. And as you can see in this map, the job center between Sherwood and Tuolton, the industrial area, but also along 72nd Avenue and Tigard, in the Tiger Triangle, Cruzway, et cetera. But the transit system remained the same and doesn't really serve these areas very well. And yet, at the same time, new trip patterns have emerged. So, the service enhancement plan that I'm going to show you today really tries to address these trip patterns. I am going to get to the plan in a second, but I do want you to know some assumptions we took or we made. One, this is a long-term vision. Unfortunately, there are ideas here that are too expensive for us to implement today. But we hope as the economy grows and as our revenues grow, we'll be able to implement these ideas. We feel pretty confident that we can incrementally start making some improvements, so year by year, start making steps towards the full vision. Secondly, this does not include high capacity, the high-capacity transit that's being discussed as part of the southwest corridor plan. The high-capacity transit, there are just too many questions there, and so, we didn't want to make any assumptions. However, we do believe that this can be adapted to whatever is decided in regards to the southwest quarter. And of course, we try to be bold but realistic. I'm also showing the legend that you're going to see on some of these maps, just so you understand. Commuter service is service that, you know, is typically about 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and then 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Standard bus service is bus service that's generally all day long, five days a week at least, sometimes on the weekends, and runs approximately every half hour. And then, frequent service is service that runs all day long, every day, for every 15 minutes in both directions. Lastly, the kind of yellow hatched area is what we call community connector service, and it's a new type of service. I'll talk about it a little bit further in the presentation, but it's areas where we want to partner with jurisdictions or other entities to find third-party funding to provide the service at a lower cost than what we could provide. So, this is a map of what your service looks like today, and what you have today is the 93 and 94. 93 goes between downtown and Tiger Transit Center. The 94 goes between downtown Sherwood and downtown Portland. Both run pretty much so all day. The 93 runs on the weekends, the 94 doesn't. But as you can see, it really only serves your eastern part of your city and really doesn't delve further into the city. Of course, also, the area between Tuolton Sherwood Road, between Sherwood and Tuolton does not have any service. So, kind of just making some broad-brush recommendations, we, you know, definitely recommend service along Tuolton Sherwood Road, and what we're showing here is the possibility of having that service extend to Sunset Road and out maybe to the YMCA. That would give you a connection to the job center. It could also give you a connection to downtown Tuolton and Bridgeport Village. Additionally, you see other service ideas for Tuolton and the rest of the region. And finally, this is kind of the more detailed map. Really, what we're saying here is maybe a new line that might start at the Sherwood YMCA, go along Sunset, through downtown, and through the Sherwood Town Center, along Tuolton Sherwood Road, to downtown Tuolton, Bridgeport, and then continuing up 72nd Avenue and eventually ending at the Tiger Transit Center. If you recall, I mentioned we were looking at kind of where people live, where they're trying to go. And one of the things that we noticed was kind of this arc of travel pattern that takes place from Sherwood through the industrial area between Sherwood and Tuolton, and kind of going north towards Tiger Transit Center and Washington Square. So, that, this line here that we're suggesting really does try to address that arc. Of course, we don't provide service on Sunset, and that, you know, is something that I would like to talk further with your community about, particularly the neighborhood associations along that stretch there. And we have been in touch with the YMCA about that, and I do understand that the property is city of Sherwood property as well. Real quickly, I mentioned that community connector service. It's really modeled on a new service that we helped get started up in Forest Grove, where, you know, they have an area in Forest Grove that really can't support traditional fixed-route transit service, a 40-foot bus. But if we can provide another provider, we can find other funding, then we can do it at a lower cost and provide that service for those folks. There are a number of areas around the region that fit this bill. You'll notice in the map I showed previously, the Tuolton industrial area has been kind of cross-hatched in that yellow, being recommended for this type of service. They already do have something called the Tuolton Shuttle. We kind of want to take it to the next level. Right now, they're just using, I think, 15 passenger vans. We want to make it look like a real transit service, but operate it with another provider, and we're working with a provider named Ride Connection. They provide a lot of senior, transportation for seniors and people with disabilities, and they're kind of expanding into the general public market as well. So, we're working closely with them on that. And that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions.
Any council questions? Counsel President Henderson?
So, just, staff won't be surprised that I asked this question. I know it's conceptual. You've said that multiple times. Do you have a estimated time when we might have service from Sherwood to Tuolton? And are you still trying to decide what kind of service or frequency? You talked about the four different kinds of service. I assume it would probably be a standard service, but I'm not sure.
That is the vision.
Right. And that standard service, would it go to the Y every time the bus comes to town, or would it be periodic?
Well, that would, that would have to be a conversation I think we all should have. You know, as some of you may know, we have an issue in Sherwood with our buses and where they turn around and where they lay over. During certain parts of the day, they come to, well, throughout the day, they come to downtown, and then they turn around and they'll lay over somewhere else.
Right.
And that can be confusing for our customers, your residents. And so, you know, having a place at the end of the line, and if that were to be the YMCA where every bus could lay over there, that would actually clear things up quite a bit. But I also know that, you know, that's a neighborhood that doesn't have service, and I think that's a conversation we'd want to have with that neighborhood about their, how comfortable they are. In terms of when could this happen, I can tell you right now that Tuolton Sherwood Road is a high priority, and it's something we don't just hear from folks here in Sherwood, but also in Tuolton quite a bit. And so, there's a lot of interest on our part in providing that service. It would be very expensive to do, and, you know, we're still digging our way out of the recession. However, it could be something we do in phases where maybe it's something that goes from the Sherwood Town Center to Bridgeport Village, or just downtown Tuolton. And then, you know, as our revenues increase, we look to expand it further. So, that may be a more cost-effective way towards approaching it initially.
You mentioned a service that's in Tuolton. How is that currently funded?
The, I think you're referring to the Tuolton Shuttle.
Mm-hmm.
It is funded with federal Job Access Reverse Commute Funds. Those are funds-
Job Access Review-
Yeah. They, it's called JARC. J-A-R-C, JARC for short.
And which agency?
The FTA, Federal Transit Administration. And however, that funding went away as the, as part of the recent MAP 21 federal legislation, basically the last transportation bill. I shouldn't say it went away. They funded the last couple of years, so we have two more years of that funding. And then, that funding actually has been moved into other flexible funding programs, some of which we do have access to. So, that may be a place for us to still be able to keep that program running. Really, if anything, we want to expand it because it is popular. People do like it, and there are areas in Tuolton that want service, but really, you can't get a fixed-route bus in those areas. And so, this could be an alternative to that.
Do the riders pay a fare?
They, right now, they don't pay a fare.
Okay.
But, you know, if you think most, well, remember, it's not Trimet that's operating. It's the Tuolton Chamber of Commerce is actually operating it. But if you, you think most of those riders, if not all of those riders, are coming from a Trimet bus, they've already paid a fare for Trimet, and if Trimet were operating the shuttle, it would essentially be a transfer, so it would be a free ride for them anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, is this Tuolton shuttle that you're talking about, is that the equivalent of your community connector service?
It is, yes.
Okay. And so, when on the map we saw that you had Sunset, that you wanted to talk about Sunset?
Yeah.
Were you proposing using this community connector service-type vehicle, or were you proposing putting a regular bus?
I was proposing a regular bus. I do want to point out, and I hope you've had the chance to see them, that Trimet has bought over 200 new vehicles, and we're buying even more. So, a lot of the older fleet, which is loud and noisy, smelly, is actually being moved out of circulation and upgraded. That's not to say that every bus is going to be a brand-new bus, and the new buses still make a certain amount of noise, but they're definitely better than what they were, and certainly more attractive than what we were providing previously.
Well, and as far as cost-effectiveness, if the commuter, the community commuter service has been successful, can you just give me kind of your pitch on why you would go to the larger bus as opposed to a community that would-
Sure.
-that would be more economical as far as gas and noise?
So, with the, with the community connector service, and those are typically kind of smaller buses that can kind of get into neighborhoods that you really don't want to put a 40-foot bus on, but they have capacity constraints. You can only put so many people on those buses. Now, the answer might be, "Well, okay, go ahead and put another bus on that." But the primary cost of the bus is the operator, so now you're spending, you're twice as much to carry the same amount, or maybe even less, people than you would for a larger bus. The, kind of the primary arterials such as Tuolton Sherwood Road are appropriate for a 40-foot bus. But you really want to use those community connector services in those areas that really can't support a 40-foot bus.
And if I can add, as Tom mentioned, this is a draft, and they're going to be getting input, they want to be getting input from the public on all aspects of their proposed plan, including Sunset, which I think, you know, he's kind of alluded that there could be some community concerns about those large buses going down that street. So, feedback is going to be really critical, and as the council's talking with, you know, the public, and as the public is talking with Trimet and council members, I think it is important to know that any comments are valid, and any comments will be taken by Trimet to refine-
Yes.
...for an ultimate plan. For an ultimate plan. And then we'll also make sure that we have a link on our website to this information and try to get the word out a little bit more as well as the efforts that Trimed is doing.
And I do want to say, the outreach period is, is actually going to run all summer long and into September because we know during summer, people are on vacation, they're not necessarily as engaged. So we want to continue doing outreach until after school has started and people are kind of paying attention, they're back into it. And come September, we're going to do a big push informing people of, you know, what this plan is and, and getting their input.
One last question. So the Community Connector Service model, sounds like it works if you can find somebody else to pay for it. Or a grant or somebody you can partner with?
Right.
But you said that in the latest, federally, the latest transportation bill was that this was cut, so you only have two years left?
Well, it was, it was moved. I shouldn't say it was cut. It was moved into.
Reallocated.
Programs that are more flexible. So we may be looking there for it. But we are, not necessarily myself, but we have other people who are focused on finding long-term funding and we're committed to keeping that program going.
So do you think the City of Sherwood would be a candidate for asking for federal money for such a service?
I think that if we find ourselves in a point where we're looking for advocates, I would love to come to the City of Sherwood and ask for your help.
Okay.
And on that note, I'd also mention, and Tom sort of did a few slides back, that Forest Grove has their, it's more of a fixed route Community Connector Service that actually they implemented in part as a result of their service enhancement plan that was done on the West Side. And I did talk with the Community Development Director at Forest Grove many months ago, and so I honestly don't remember all the details about that service. But it's very successful and they're very happy with it. And that might be an opportunity, if council's interested, as we go forward, to see if we can get someone from Forest Grove to come talk to council in a work session or something like that, and maybe with Trimed to discuss that further.
Great.
You may not be able to answer this question, but a lot of federal funding is dependent upon population served. And we are still in a small-town category. And I'm just wondering if that would be why Tuolton might be able to leverage those federal dollars, but they might actually be inaccessible to a community under 20,000.
That's a good question, and I could go back and look at the rules. What I would tell you, though, is that at least the existing funding, the job access funding, really has more to do with jobs and job density than residents. So, you know, the City of Tuolton, something like, you know, 90% of the employees who work in Tuolton live somewhere else. And probably close to that number of people who live in Tuolton work outside of Tuolton. So every day, there's a big exchange of people coming and going in that community. And the industrial area really is, is the heart of, of a lot of that activity. And so, as all of us know who've driven on Tuolton Sherwood Road during the rush hours, so I think that really is what put it over the top in getting the funding for that shuttle. I should say, that shuttle has actually been around for 17 years now.
Really?
Yeah, it's been around for quite a while.
That's incredible.
I want to thank you. And Julie and I, we've been going to all the different meetings. So it's, I'm glad you're keeping us involved because we're really not one of the big players. But you've listened to us and you've come here, and it's, really do appreciate that. Didn't have to because we're not really part of this Elvis Quarter Plan anymore to the extent we were. So once again, thank you and thank you for listening to our people. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I just want to compliment your staff. They've been really supportive and great throughout.
Thank you.
All right, under new business, Resolution 2014-048, adopting an amended City of Sherwood Home Rule Charter as approved by electors at the May 20th, 2014 election. City Manager?
Yes. Mayor and Council, this is related to the item that was on your consent agenda earlier this evening where you accepted the results of the May vote on the charter. This is the last step, basically, where the council will approve the new charter language. This is the spring vote that we went through, and you just had a work session this evening with the Charter Review Committee to talk about putting additional amendments on the fall ballot. So this is the wrap-up of that spring effort while the effort is ongoing to put amendments on the fall ballot. So this is really kind of a routine matter to officially adopt the changes that the voters authorized back in May in the primary.
Do I have any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move we adopt Resolution 2014-048.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Resolution 2014-049, authorizing the City Manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Metro to, to concept plan the urban reserve areas west of existing City of Sherwood Urban Growth Boundary. Brad Kelby.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. And Council, how are you? I just need a second here.
Mayor Middleton.
While we're waiting, we'll go ahead and, at the end also, I'll take citizen comments and some people have been coming in. I see their signing forms.
I just need to confirm Counsel Langer is still with us. Counsel Langer?
Yeah, I said aye on the last one there. Maybe he couldn't hear me.
Thank you. And I got your vote on the previous resolution as in favor.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so as you stated, this is Resolution 2014-49. And what it would do would be to permit the City Manager to enter into an IGA with Metro. The city received $221,000 construction excise tax grant from Metro in August 2013 to fund a concept plan intended to look at how the city would serve the area that I'm about to show you with transportation, utilities, land uses, natural resources, capital facilities. And we talked about phasing and funding. And I want to clarify that this is not an area that's going to be brought into the city today, five years, 10 years. We're looking at a long-term. The urban reserve areas were adopted by Metro this year, and they are the small darker areas around the cities. And the one that we're specifically talking about is this area that's essentially west of Albert, south of Shoals Ferry, and north of Edie. And it's about 1,291 acres. We would be looking at what the orderly and efficient provision of services would look like out there over time, how the city would potentially fund those services, and what a good phasing plan would be to bring those in over time. So as Metro considers where they're going to expand your urban growth boundary and allocate their populations, they're going to basically say, well, Sherwood, over the next, you know, planning horizon, you're going to have to accommodate so many people and we're going to have to be able to and ready to address that. So when they do bring this area in, then it'll be a matter of, have we thought about it? And this is the preliminary step in, have we thought about it? And if you can remember, this is recent, that Metro has allowed cities to do this because before Damascus, if you came, Metro would expand the urban growth boundary and then they would require you to concept plan and zone it. Now they're actually looking at, since they established the urban reserve areas, opportunities for concept planning early. That's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer those.
Questions from Council? Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2014-049.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution 2014-050, authorizing the City Manager to execute a construction contract for the Columbia Street Regional Stormwater Facility.
Hello, my name is Craig Christensen. I'm an engineering associate two with the City of Sherwood. And I'm here to put forth Resolution 2014-050, which is requesting that the City Manager authorize a construction contract for the Columbia Street Regional Stormwater Quality Facility. This project is a required project as part of the canary improvements that were recently performed. And that is an agreement that we have with CWS, so we are required to put in these regional stormwater quality facilities. This project has gone out to bid and since this resolution was initially put out, we actually have open bids as of last Thursday. And you should see in front of you a revised resolution. And in red, you'll see the information pertaining to the, the bid opening. The low bidder and the construction company that we're looking at executing the contract with is called Banzer Construction Company. And we're doing a base contract amount of $595,909 with a construction contingency of 10% and a professional services amount of 2.5% of the, of the base contract amount. And so I'm requesting authorization to have the City Manager sign this contract to begin the construction of these facilities.
Do I have any questions from the Council? Do I have a motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So in the original resolution, you had a base bid of, base contract amount of $536?
Yes.
But the award came in at $595?
Correct.
And that was the lowest qualified bidder?
That, that is the, that was the apparent low bidder, yes. Or the lowest responsive bidder.
So I see you adjusted, you adjusted your contingency as well as your professional services fees are down.
Yes, I adjusted the numbers to fit within the amount of budget we have.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2014-050.
Second.
One.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. We're going to take a five-minute break. It's hot in here, so just for, so you can get some water. So it'll be five minutes. We'll start up on the public hearing.
Want to do citizen comment?
Yeah, I was going to say, when do you want?
So we already did citizen comment?
Yeah, but they were filling them out and didn't get them up. So Naomi, and I had, I thought I had one more, but that's it? Okay. No, not that one.
I thought I had one.
Still going to take a break, sir?
After this. We'll just go ahead. You want to give your citizen comment and then we'll take a break.
So my name is Naomi Belov. I have three questions. One is, I was talking to Craig Christensen this morning about Lincoln Street and the improvements there. And quite a while ago, we did a walk through our neighborhood, asked the neighbors for some safety improvements and whether they thought we should get sidewalks or lights or, you know, extend pavement that is uniform throughout the street because it goes from 30, 35 feet to 18 feet. As I'm sure they all know, they've decorated the street with a lot of measurements in the last few months, so. And so I did present that to the City Council in the last half-year. And I also asked Bob Galati what we should do to modify the drivers' habits because people do go fast. And thank you, Chief Groth, for doing this speed study. They did a speed study. They found that people do go about 40 miles an hour at certain times of the day. So my question is, I was talking to Craig Christensen this morning about putting in a speed hump. Bob Galati said we can't do speed bumps because they're too difficult for the fire trucks to drive over because they're too narrow and it's just dangerous. But a speed hump, the trucks can get over and it'll modify the driver's behavior. So I'm wondering if we can put in a formal request for a speed hump or two, which shouldn't be very expensive on Lincoln Street now, especially so because it'll be a thoroughfare going to Walmart over to Home Depot. And the second question I have is, I've heard there's a rumor about the Cedar of Lebanon Tree being cut down in Sherwood. Is there anything in Sherwood that we have in place for historical trees?
Yeah, there's nothing on a tree.
This is a large tree, just close, close by here down the street. The third is, could you tell me what the qualifications are to run for City Council? Do I need to live within city limits? Is that something? Yeah. And if so, if I happen to have several residences, does my primary residence need to be within city limits? Is that a question you can answer now?
That would be City Recorder.
Ms. Belov, on at least the last two items, actually all three, I can have the appropriate staff people meet with you and to answer those questions in detail.
Sure.
So the election issue would be the City Recorder, who's our Elections Officer. The tree issue would probably be Julia Heiduk. And you are correct, there's information on our website about that tree being removed later this month.
Right, I saw that.
Because we know that the community is going to be very upset to see that tree go down. And then on your first issue, we can certainly talk to the PoliCorks Director, the City Engineer, and Police Department about the issue on Lincoln Street. So I'll get you to the right people, okay?
Okay. So my question with residency is, just, just saying I have several residences. If I don't actually live full-time within city limits, is that okay? Can I still be on council? That's my main question. And I also wanted to ask Matt Langer, Counselor Langer, directly. It's too bad he's not here tonight.
He is.
Okay. Whether he does live full-time within the city limits because it's my understanding that he now lives on Parrot Mountain, at Parrot Mountain Estates. So I just wanted to see if this is a rumor or if it's true. And if it's true, why is he still on City Council? Because he should not be on council if that's a rule. Okay, and I'd like an answer.
We'll throw that to staff and they'll get back with you.
Okay, which staff?
I'll take the leader.
Okay, thanks. And also about the process, like if he's not supposed to be on City Council because he's not residing with his family within city limits, what's the process for filling his position on council? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question on that, on the Lebanon Tree?
Yes.
So you said that it's posted on our website, or is that going to be something that's coming before council?
Nope.
Or is that a staff decision?
That's a staff decision.
Okay.
And during City Manager Report, I'll have Julia talk about that tree because there's a history and it will be very noticeable when that tree comes down. It is a very large tree.
Okay.
And the reasons why that tree needs to come down.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Okay, we'll take five minutes and at five minutes to eight, we'll start up again. So it's like eight minutes. Gender, we're going to have the Parks Committee first because he has to leave at 8:00. It should just take a few minutes. So he's going to give his council comments from the Park Committee. It's Counsel Butterfield.
Yeah, I just wanted to update everybody on the Parks and Rec position on the, on the dog park. So at this point, we've identified a spot for the dog park. We're in the process of deciding what's going to be in that dog park. Once we decide what's going to be in there, then we can decide, you know, what kind of funding we're going to have to find to fund this thing. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We, we're moving on it. Everybody at Parks and Rec is involved. We're going as quickly as we can go with the amount of funding that we have, which at this point, isn't very much. So that's kind of where we're at.
Our citizens, we both want to comment.
I, like five seconds. Is there any way that we can get town participation to just give funds? Because I know of at least 100 people that would probably give up $100.
You know what? I would say at this point, see the City Manager and if it's something that they can take care of, they'll, they'll do it. Yeah.
Unleashed wants to give you money. Every time I'm in there, she stops me and says, we want to give the city money for the dog park and no one will return the money.
Well, Joe will take care of that as well.
Yes. The answer to both your questions is yes. I think once we land on a final design and a cost, because we don't have a cost at this point. I think there's been a lot of interest in doing some private fundraising, whether it's individuals or businesses in town. So I think the key is, as the Park and Rec Advisory Committee starts to put the final design for the facility together, that's when the public, who are going to be the users of that park, should be involved. Because a lot of folks, as the lady said earlier this evening, go to other cities to use their facilities. And you guys have expertise what works and what doesn't work. We want to build a dog park that will benefit the community, hopefully 12 months out of the year. We know in some other communities that it gets shut down because muddy rain and things like that. So when we have an open house, which is probably going to be in the August, September kind of range, that's when we're going to want to hear from the community. And then once we have a price tag in terms of how much we believe this is going to spend, we're going to have to do some budget amendments and ask Council to actually approve the budget for it. But I've heard that consistently, that there is enough support in the town that people want to contribute to this. So we're going to try to make that happen as well.
Joe, I just have one question.
Sure.
Just on that. So you, you answered part of it because you said, because I was kind of looking for... So you answered part of it because you said, because I was kind of looking for, I think that everyone would like to kind of hear a little bit of a timeline, even if it's kind of a scheduled timeline. So you've got August, September, open house. And then at that point, what do you see as far as a timeline?
Well, again, depending on the amenities that are gonna go in the park, there might have to be some kind of land use process. I'm looking at Julie, so it may or may not have to go in the planning commission, depending on the design, if you wanna talk about that.
I am sorry, I was not listening.
So...
So what was the question?
The design, let's say by September 1st, we land on a design. At least the Park and Rec Advisory Committee has a design for the facility at Snyder Park. And we have a cost estimate. There is a chance that that would have to go through a land use process with the planning commission, so...
Yes, and I'm gonna look for Brad, who's not here either. I know he's evaluated. He, we've sort of looked at some different scenarios. I'm not, I don't remember off the top of my head exactly where we landed. But I believe that would have to go through a, like a site plan modification process and depending on what's involved. Tom, you're gonna chime in because you know.
Well, I do remember Brad. He said that we probably would need to do a Parks Master Plan update.
That's right.
Because the Parks Master Plan didn't include that, as well as probably conditioning is permit applications. But I believe that he decided that would probably need to happen up there from a land use perspective.
So the short answer, Counselor Clark, is there's a process that we're gonna have to go through, just like with the lighting process for the lights, which started last year. A relatively easy process to put lights up once you have the money, but it had to go through that whole process. There'll be neighborhood meetings and other types of things. So my sense is, you're probably not gonna see construction until probably spring of next year because of the rainy season. And again, that will vary. I think one of the things we really wanna hear from the dog owners in town that have strong opinions about other dog parks is the ground cover. Should this all be grass? Should it be a combination of grass and chips? Should it be some other kind of material? Because, and whatever we put in, is it gonna become a maintenance issue for the city in terms of maintaining it? So I think, as excited as everyone is and wants to get this project done, we wanna do it right. And that's why it's gonna take a little bit of time. And I, we will try to do a better job of communicating with the folks that are proponents of this facility in town. There is a Sherwood Dog Park Facebook page that has about 500-plus users or likes on it. That's a place where people are talking about it, so... But I think we are, at the Park and Rec Advisory Committee, and certainly I've heard from this council, committed to building the city's first dog park. And now we've landed on a site, now we just gotta get the design done. And I have heard from councilors and the mayor, let's do it as quick as possible because we need this and it's long overdue. But we also have to do it through the same process as anything else in terms of land use approvals. Does that help at all?
Yes.
Thank you.
You know, I would say that, you know, Parks and Rec meets the first Monday of every month, just about every month. So if you have any comments, concerns, you're welcome to show up and give us your comments.
I'm coming in late, so I apologize. Is the concept design been presented to the Parks Board?
No, we're still in the process of concept design.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. Ordinance 2014-013 approving a planned unit development to be known as Cedar Brook Planned Unit Development, including application of planned unit development overlay on the comprehensive plan and zone map and approving the 65-lot subdivision. Senior Planner, Michelle Miller.
Mayor and staff, prior to starting, I need to read the public hearing statement. The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening to hear testimony on ordinance 2014-013, approving a planned unit development, PUD, to be known as the Cedar Brook Planned Unit Development, including application of a planned unit development overlay on the comprehensive plan and zone map and approving a 65-lot subdivision. The purpose of the hearing is provide the public with an opportunity to testify on the above said item. The council will conduct tonight's hearing in the following order. Staff will present their staff report and materials. The council will then open the hearing for public testimony. And each person's time limit will be listed as follows. The applicant, 30 minutes split between presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application, four minutes. Persons opposed to the application, four minutes. Rebuttal from the applicant, remainder of their 30 minutes. The council will then close the public hearing. Final comments from staff will follow, followed by questions of the council of staff. Discussion and deliberation of the council will follow. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the mayor. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing will be recorded.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Michelle Miller, senior planner with the City of Sherwood. So tonight, we're here... Sorry about that. No, I can't back up. Okay, so the issue before the city council tonight is, should the city council approve the Cedar Brook Planned Unit Development, a 65-unit, high-density residential development with a mix of single-family detached homes and attached townhomes? And for those... Planned unit developments... Oh, okay, thanks. Allow a project to have some flexibility in the code requirements for challenging parcels for the trade-off of innovative design and a benefit to the community. So part of that process was the PC, a Type 5 process with the planning commission held a couple hearings in June, a public hearings, to review the proposal. And then they forwarded a recommendation that you have before you tonight after reviewing the project. The city council is the decision-maker in this case, and any appeal would be heard before Luba. And then after, if the council approves the planned unit development, it'll go back to the planning commission for what's called final development plan review. So they'll have another look in the more refined design that the applicant will be building. And to give you a little bit of idea, this project is under the 120-day clock, which means that a final decision needs to be made within 120 days by the city after receiving the application during completeness review. And that date is August 20th. And so if you're not able to make a decision or like to have more information, there are a couple of opportunities in August to have further hearings on this matter without running into the 120-day clock. So the Cedar Brook Planned Unit Development is located in the parcel that's outlined in red here, adjacent to, near Highway 99W. The Cedar Creek Apartments are located here. This is Southwest Minneke Parkway. This is Cedar Brook Way. And the applicant's proposing to extend that to the roundabout as part of the project. You might remember this from a few months ago. It was previously zoned general commercial. And you reviewed the application to change that to high-density residential with density of 16.8 to 24 dwelling units per acre. And this site has about 2.74 acres of developable land, which makes about 65 dwelling units as the minimum threshold for the high-density residential zone. So they're just meeting the minimum density. Earlier, in 2005, this was part of a minor land partition dividing all of these parcels with the improvements to the Minneke Roundabout. So to talk a little bit about some of the things that the planning commission reviewed, go over the different housing types. The applicant proposes three different general housing types. You can see there are approximately 38 two-story townhomes with one-car garage in front and two-story, single-family detached, about 15 of those, and 12 two-story townhomes with two-car alley-loaded garages. And the dwelling unit size and lot range is also on that table there as well. You see that? The applicant will go over that a little bit more detail and kind of give you a picture of some of the elevations that they're proposing for this project. So early on, this project, everyone is aware of some of the parking issues that are in that area. And so we really made the applicant aware of that situation. And the planning commission reviewed that issue in particular for this project very closely. But one of the things that the planning commission really thought through was the fact that they really couldn't hold... They could hold the applicant's feet to the fire about the parking issues that would be generated with this development, but they really couldn't solve the entire parking problem for the entire area. And they could just make them responsible for what they were developing here. And in this case, with the extension of Cedar Brook Way, there'll be, and also the Public Street A, which is on the kind of the top of your screen there, there'll be about 79 new parking units, parking spaces on-site. And then there'll also be parking spaces for each housing unit, accounting for, it looks like about four parking spaces per dwelling unit in total. So that more than adequately meets the parking requirements for our housing type standard. So here you can see the breakdown. The two-story townhomes with one-car garage in front will have 38 garage spaces with the 38 driveway spaces and so on. And that, those are all the on-site parking spaces that will be for each of the dwelling units. Another important component with PUDs are the trade-offs that come with adding a boost to the amount of open space that's required with the development. So PUDs are required to have 15% open space in total. And that can be spread out through the entire develop... It can be maintained publicly or privately by the development or the HOA. And so in this case, they have several different tracts of open space. But the two really large areas are the one you can see highlighted with the circle there within the development that I have an orange arrow going to. And then the other area is kind of a orphaned site over on the other side of Cedar Brook Way, what we call Tract K. And the applicant's proposing, and he'll tell you a little bit more about what they're proposing for Tract K, but an extension of that will be, and part of the benefit to the community will be a trail that will extend from the intersection and roundabout of Cedar Brook Way there and extend and connect with the vineyard's existing trail that you can see will get you all the way to the school area. And here's a close-up of their project there. It's still in development and where the trail will show that connection across the development. It's about 9,000 square feet in size. And here's kind of the out, zoomed-out version of the white trail that will connect to the school properties and the existing trail network there with the development. So in looking at the code standards for whether should this area be dedicated to the city or should it be retained by the homeowners association, that's the decision that the Parks Board weighed in on and offered their recommendation that the, they recommended, and they recommended to the planning commission. And the planning commission also agreed that the property is retained by the development. There's a trail easement on the portion that is, that will connect to the trail. And amenities would be built by the, and the cost borne by the developer and fees paid in fee and lieu. So, let's see. And the planning commission recommendations to council, just to highlight a few. They included a restriction that they're gonna be evaluating in the final development plan that the CCNRs include restrictions that the garages really need to be used for vehicles. And so imposing that on the development. And also, we've had new code amendments where a parking district might be a possibility if there's, if there continues to be an issue on those streets. The trail connection to the vineyards could be constructed along with the majority of the dwellings on-site. Because of the permitting issues through the wetland area, that that might take a year-long process. And so to not hold up the development in whole, they'll be allowed to kind of proceed both with the construction of their, the housing units and as well as be building the trail until leaving about one townhome unit or three single-family homes at their discretion before the trail needs to be completed. And so all the areas of open space would be maintained by the HOA and monitored through the CCNRs. And each lot that has a deviation from the standard code setback requirements, those were identified in the follow-up planning commission meeting and so that we know exactly where those setback exceptions will be occurring on the site. And Bob is here. If you have any questions about some of the street modifications, you might have noticed that some of the, some of the streets, there's going to be a private street, rear-loaded townhome units, and that's somewhat unique to the city. And they had to follow the rules that Bob reviewed there. And so at this time, I'll answer any questions and ask that you hold a public hearing on the ordinance 2014-13 Cedar Brook PUD.
Any questions from council? Counselor Folsom and I sat through most of the planning commission meetings on this. No questions?
Okay, great.
Good evening, councillors and mayor. My name is Steve Miller with D.R. Horton, 4380 Southwest McAdam Avenue, Suite 100, Portland, Oregon 97239. With me tonight is Jeff Simpson from Simple Design. And he will be presenting our open space concepts to you tonight so you can get a better understanding of how that area can be used and its value to the project. Michelle gave you a great overview, so I don't wanna take up too much time. I know we have a limited time to present to you. So I will go through briefly a little presentation, and then we can answer questions that you might have tonight. As long as I can drive this thing, we'll be okay. Okay. So some of the stuff you've seen already, but it'll kind of give you a little bit of background on where we've been and where we're at today. And we'll show you some renderings of some of the homes also. And then Jeff will go into his presentation. So you've got an orientation now on where the project is located. This slide just kind of helps with that and shows you some of the components with the houses in that area with the open space also highlighted in green and then the vegetative corridor along the western boundary of the site. This is a slide that was talked about during the zone change. And one of the topics that came up there was, if we don't do the proposal that we had, what would you end up with? And the alternative would be something similar to the east side of our property, which is another apartment complex building with parking lots and that type of development. It was pretty clear from the planning commission that that's not what the city wanted. They wanted us to go outside the box a little bit with this property and come up with something unique. And so that's what we've tried to do. We've tried to blend different types of housing styles in here. So we have offered three different housing styles. But even in the single-family detached, there are two other different housing styles. So you're getting a total of four different products here versus just three or four big buildings. So we think we've done a good job of using the land efficiently and bringing in diversity to the area with the housing types. The next slide will show you... I didn't anticipate that one. So this is just, again, showing you the layout. But what I wanted to get to was our renderings. And so this one is a rendering of one of the single-family homes, the detached models. So you have a two-story detached, single-wide type of a home, if you will. When it was presented to you during the, during the zone change, the gentleman talked about a double-wide, double-stack type of a home. And that's kind of what you're looking at. The next picture is another rendering of another single-family detached home. And then the third... then the third photo here is actually a photo. So that's what it will look like on the street. The next one is a photo also of what a single-family detached home will look like on the street. These are the townhomes. These are the front-loaded townhomes, so these ones will be located along the eastern boundary that will back up to the apartment complexes, and they'll also be located along Minneke Parkway as well, about eight units there. And so these ones will be fronting onto that A Street. And this is a photo of what those look like. The next one is the rear-loaded townhomes, and these will be located in the central part of the project with the garages in the rear on the alley. And the next photo shows you what a photo of that could look like. And so that's really what I have for you. I just want to get you a feel for the housing that will be in here. And I'll turn this over to Jeff now, and he will take you through the layout as a whole with the open space.
Good evening, councilors and Mayor Middleton. My name's Jeff Simpson with Simple Landscape Architects and Urban Planners, and my goal tonight is to familiarize you with our open-space design approach and our proposed solution. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, just close out of that. Let's see, the first one is the binder, that's the one we want.
I'm sorry, we thought we had the software on the computer. We needed to open up some of our presentations, so.
It worked for Planning Commission.
We went to their, we put it under their computer.
Okay, perfect. Good, thank you. Thank you very much. Are we gonna, are we gonna need that for the other? So this view you've seen already, but what we're trying to illustrate here with regards to the Cedar Brook subdivision is its relationship to the Cedar Creek Master Plan. The image up in the right corner of this page is an overall view. You can see downtown Sherwood if you've got good eyes, unlike me. But you can see how the Cedar Creek Trail connects over to 99W, crosses 99W, and then in the enlarged view, you can see our relationship with the southern portion of our property, abutting the master-plan route. So, next slide. This plan view illustrates, and it's hard to see on this screen, but the differentiation between private lots and community open space. The green colors are quite different in the rendering. And so this was to, can you see that? All right, yeah. Ms. Miller did a nice job of explaining the PUD process and the fact that it recognizes and allows for some flexibility, innovative design, and benefit to the community, and I think she made some good points. And I just wanted to reiterate, our approach with the open space for this project recognizes those three points, the innovative design and benefit to the community, in that we felt it made a lot of sense to distribute the open space throughout the community and provide some diversity of amenity, provide some connectivity, and invite the community as a whole to experience the entire site. And so these pocket park, open-space layout approach, which you see in the center, the circle, that's our large central open space with a play structure. The other spaces have pedestrian facilities that wind through them and connect in and out throughout the community, to connect this community to the perimeter streets, to the Cedar Creek Trail, and across the street over to the proposed, that 9,000-square-foot open space that's along Cedar Brook Way. We think it encourages the community to come out and use these small spaces. We also think that it gives us better solar access to our properties. We've taken the single-family homes that are on the west side of the project and kind of splayed them to allow for better sunlight penetration through that building envelope into the inner part of the community. And the spacing and the arrangement of the open spaces, which we think have significant value in terms of their usability, and we have some renderings we're going to flip through here. Provide opportunities for people to have, you know, different activities, passive, active activities going on in different parts of the community throughout the day. Next slide. So this is sort of a bird's-eye view looking north, northeast, and you see the roundabout there, the termination of Minneke and Cedar Brook, and the, again, the orange line demonstrating the Cedar Creek Master Plan route. Next slide. This is a perspective from inside the project in our central open space with the play structure. Next slide, thanks. This is another view looking southwest, so we've, opposite the first bird's-eye view you saw, we were looking back the other direction. So up in the top corner of the, of the view of the image, you'll see the open space, which we're proposing a, an exercise station scenario throughout the project. So we've got little stations at various spots along the way. So you have to actually move along these pedestrian facilities to experience all the stations, and one of the stations is over there across the street, across Cedar Brook Way at the dog park. Next slide. This is a image, a little bit of a bird's eye at the corner, so we're creating just a little community garden space here at the corner and an opportunity to draw people in from the public right-of-way into the community between the buildings, again, with with public infrastructure sidewalks that draw people into these series of open spaces and pocket parks. And then this is another bird's eye looking northwest. Again, the orange line with the Cedar Creek Trail project, master plan.
And if I can, I'll add a little bit to that. With this view, what you can see is, on the west-hand side, where we have our Tract K, which is our 9,000-square-foot area that we're using as open space for this project, and as Michelle has discussed, we brought this to the Parks Board to see if they would be interested in accepting this land as a public park for the community as a whole, because the trail that's going to go through this park and connect over to the existing trail on the west-hand side of the ravine there is on your transportation system master plan. So we're putting that in to comply with your plan, but we see a lot of public use coming through this and being a burden on the HOA, and that's why we wanted to try and work with the Parks Board to try and create a win-win, where we do something and give it to the city, but we get benefited because we get reimbursed through the Park SDCs for building the park. And overall, their thought was, we don't really want park, pocket parks, but one thing we heard tonight is that there's a pressing need, it sounds like, for dog parks. Right now, we're proposing a dog park in this area. So the black fenced area up at the top, on the left-hand side of the page there, that is what we're proposing as a dog park right now. And we would be interested in working with the city on trying to develop that and see if the city would be interested in taking this on. At this time, it would be a private dog park only for the residents of this community. As you can imagine, that's going to be a very difficult burden for the residences here to make sure that other folks aren't coming in and using it, but we think it's going to be an asset for the area and for this community, because we believe that people will own pets and want to have an area for them to run them and exercise them. And so I just want to bring that up with you and see if there's any interest. With you folks being the final decision-maker, as Michelle has indicated, the Planning Commission just kind of fell in line with the Parks Board, but we are still interested in trying to see if there's a way to partner with the city to create something special here in this area that can benefit not just this project, but the community as a whole. And the reason we want to do that is because the trail goes through and it's adjacent to a very large piece of land that the city does own. And so we just see this becoming used more by people as the, people from the community as a whole than just our subdivision here. And so maybe that's a talking point later tonight, but I just wanted to let you know that we are still open to that idea to try and make this work for more than just the residents of this PUD. With that being said, that is essentially our presentation, and we would like to answer any questions that you folks have for us.
Counselor Grant?
Thanks. It's a good presentation, and I like the look of it a lot better than the other half of it and the other half of that site area that you've talked about, that the previous development. I just, I'm not, I want to, since you mentioned the dog park, I want us all to be clear on exactly what you're suggesting. If you're going to have a private dog park that it's exclusive to those residents, what participation would you be suggesting that the city would have at all, anyway?
Yes. What we would be suggesting is what we proposed to the Parks Board, which is, we build it, and we get reimbursed through the SDCs that are generated from this project. There's about a half a million dollars in park SDCs. It's a little bit more, actually, than a half a million dollars in park SDCs that this project will generate. We did the math on building this park out. I don't have the number in my head right now, but it was a fraction of those dollars that would be needed to be able to make this happen and, you know, create a park for the whole community as opposed to just the PUD. And so that's what we're trying to propose.
You're saying that if the city participates, it's an open park, but if the city does not, it would be an exclusive park?
If the city does not agree to maintain the park, take the land on as a public park and make it part of their inventory of park spaces, then it would remain part of our land, and it would remain part of the PUD, and it would be private.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Folsom?
I just wanted to, because I did get to sit through this, I feel I had, I always had the opportunity to, I talked to staff as I was sitting next to Julia, but I just wanted to offer some clarity for the citizens who are watching, too. So the dog park that you're talking about is about 9,000 square feet, is that correct?
The entire parcel, the entire Tract K, is 9,000 square feet. The dog park would be a portion of that. Right now, it's about two-thirds of that 9,000 square feet.
Okay. Because that gives you a little bit of perspective, because the parcel that we're looking at at Snyder Park is a lot bigger, four times, four acres.
Kristin, do you recall the size that we're looking at? It is significantly larger.
Yeah.
It's larger, I want to say it's smaller. No, I don't think it's smaller.
Okay.
I think it's supposed to be.
Oh, yeah, right there off of Pine. So the challenge is that the Parks Board and the Planning Commission, I think, put forth is that accessibility and parking to be there. The HOA has the ability to have a key and a card key so that it's not a terrible burden, because we happen to own two properties that our children have lived in, and one is an HOA, and they have a key for something. The other one happens to be a lot where my son has a 9,100-square-foot lot, and so I could really see that. But there are two dogs, and there are two Siberian Huskies in my Chihuahua, and there's kind of a lot of running. So I think for, what we've heard from the Parks Board and the Planning Commission is that they don't want, they don't feel like that pocket park is necessarily going to serve enough of the community to justify the action. Is that correct, Julia? Is that kind of the feeling you got?
I wasn't at the Parks Board meeting, so I can't speak for the Parks Board, but I know that that is, that is often the concern with pocket parks, is it's really not serving that larger community need. I don't know if, Kristin, if that's, but then my understanding is that's kind of what the Parks Board stated.
They were reluctant to give up the SDCs.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Right. Yeah, just to repeat for the, for the audience at home, they were reluctant to give up the SDCs that would be able to benefit the community at large in exchange for a park, a pocket park that wanted to meet the community at-large needs.
Right. Because it's a pretty substantial need that we see. But it is, I just wanted to say, I just really like the work that's been done on the plan, and I appreciate the attempts to serve and partner wherever you can. But I think for me, I heard the feedback coming from Planning and Parks Board pretty clearly.
I think it'd be kind of a good selling point for your product, anyway, to have your own private little dog park that, you know, that people could use.
Yeah, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, I just wanted to bring it back up since dog parks were talked about tonight and let you know that that is something that we are considering as well, and if there is a win-win here, we'd still like to do that, but if it's, if that ship has left the dock, then we will have a wonderful private dog park.
Counselor President, do you have questions?
Sure. As you know, I'm sure, parking is a huge challenge, Cedar Brook, and I want to, I guess, announce or divulge that my mother lives in Cedar Brook. She's right there in the front row. And so I'm wondering, have you, in similar developments like this, seen a need to issue parking permits? Because what I, what I see happening, I was wondering if, could you go back to like a larger view that shows the other development?
Yeah, well, let's see.
I know the street parking is going to help.
Let's see what I can show you. How did she open that the last time? Right, right, yeah, got it, yeah, 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 got it. There we go. Yeah, got it, okay. There you go. Sorry about that.
Okay. Because what I, I guess one of my concerns is, is that parking from the existing multifamily development that's there is going to overflow to the street.
It already does.
Yeah. No, I know, it does, but there's only parking on one side of that street right now.
There'll be parking on.
Because of the homes that are being developed there.
Correct. On the existing arm of Cedar Brook that's constructed right now, it is one side, but on the, when the extension goes through to the roundabout, it will be parking on both sides.
Right. So within the, in the, Adobe, thank you. But within your, the center of your unit, will you have permitted parking?
On the street that runs north and south of the project, there'll be parking on one side.
That's the A Street?
That's the A Street, correct.
Okay. And then when you were here in January, I kept my original information. It said you, I haven't, I've tried to do a quick count, but 265 parking spaces is what you proposed then.
And I think we're still right at about that number. Let me open up another slide, and I believe I have my count on that slide. 263. And we lost a couple spaces just due to fire hydrant placement, but we are going to, we put one on the east side of A Street. We're going to move it to the west side, adjacent to the homes, and so that parking space will come back. And so that was just a, an unanticipated location that we didn't really take into consideration, if we will, losing that parking space. Once that was brought up during the Planning Commission hearing, we said, okay, let's move that fire hydrant to the other side, keep that parking space, and continue to maximize the parking as much as we can. So that's a revision that will come through with the final master plan approval with the, with the Planning Commission.
Okay, so currently you don't plan to issue parking permits?
We are prepared to do that. Now, when we, you know, some of the other folks here were at some of these hearings, and we proposed that. It didn't get required as a condition of approval, but we are fully prepared to work with the police department if it becomes a burden to set that parking district up, you know, for the benefit of our PUD. It would not benefit the residents that are in the apartment complex, but we would do it to make sure that this functioned at least without any problems to the, to the degree possible.
Okay. And then I assume you're going to put fencing in on the very east side of your property?
That's correct.
Between the two developments?
Yes, we'll have cedar fencing, six-foot cedar fencing there to separate our project from the apartment complexes.
Okay. And you, it doesn't look like you have any, oh, wait a minute. Do you have one walk-through?
Yes, there is a connection there on the east side into the apartment complexes there, so they'll be able to come through and, you know, get over to the trail system and whatnot through our project.
Without having to go all the way out to Cedar Brook?
That's correct.
Okay. So the connection to the trail that currently exists, you had that on a previous slide as well.
See if I can, probably have to do the same thing here, huh? Not that. Not that.
A for persistence. So that trail connection down there, is that unique as in you'll need Fish and Wildlife or Clean Water Services to, to approve that? And I was just kind of wondering what the cost of that was to you?
Getting it permitted will, will take time and money.
Sure.
Honestly, I really don't know an exact dollar figure on what that will take, but I would imagine getting that trail approved with plannings and, and all that is going to, gosh, I know. What would you charge us?
And what would the trail surface be? Just asphalt?
We would like to make it a soft trail. Primarily because it switches back down a very steep grade.
Right.
And so that's the concern, you know, trying to get a hard surface into that area is a bit of a challenge. And so there's a culvert in there right now that the trail would go over top of. And so the idea is to try and bring in a soft trail, connect to the other hard surface trail. If, I, I'm not sure what you're thinking about, but I'm anticipating that you might be thinking a little bit along the lines of ADA.
Yeah.
They could go down the existing sidewalk, 299, and cut and then come back up the other side and be on hard surfaces the whole time.
Right, up handling.
So there's still a route, an alternative route for folks who are ADA.
Okay. And in your private alley, that's obviously going to be maintained by the HOA?
That's correct.
And just to clarify, a fire truck can get in and out there without any trouble, without having to back up?
We, we have worked on that and that is why we've put, you, you can't see it on this slide, but in the alley, there is a, it's at the southwest corner of that alley. The alley actually has like a bulb, if you will, so they can make that turning radius and come out the other end.
Okay. Thank you.
And in the alley, I noticed, so around the complex, you have the sidewalks and the parking and then in the alley, there are no sidewalks and no parking, is that correct?
That's correct. It's just, it's a very odd-shaped property with some constraints, as you, as you know, and so to get that alley to work out, we had to make it just for the access to these homes, to their garages and whatnot. So every, just so you know, every home that's on that, except for the ones along Minneke there, are two-car garages.
How long are your driveways?
20 feet.
20 feet. And is public street A?
Somewhere, somewhere a little more, give or take, but 20 feet.
Right, so public street A, is that a ride-in, ride-out?
Off of Minneke, correct.
So ride-in, ride-out?
Correct.
Okay.
No more questions?
Counselor Lyer?
Can I go ahead?
Do you have any questions with the applicant?
No, I'm good, thanks for asking though.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
Thank you.
And I have so far two requests to speak, first is Jay Claus.
Robert James Claus, 2221 Southwest Pacific Highway. Now, as far as this project is concerned, I'm neutral but support it. But I want to make a point, I'd like the record kept open for two weeks, and I'm going to tell you why. I have believed for some time that part of the deteriorator should modify heavily any support for the Toilette National Wildlife Refuge. When it passed, I was there with Robert Wagner and the good senator from the state, and Dingell came out of the meeting and said, I guarantee you, you're making a mistake. I understand what happened to your family, I'm sorry your brother got murdered, I'm sorry the trouble you had. But he said, you've got some idea if people can respect fish and wildlife, he said they can't. They won't. This refuge will be a failure, it doesn't matter what you and Senator Hatfield do. Now, if you go down there, you have headward erosion and you're losing the wetlands. Joe Galzyn good enough, and I thank him very much, to have a meeting with me to start looking at that, but Department of Forestry had that completely restored. It's now going out. Tonight, I hear enthusiastic support for a dog park. Jim and Christmas, I'm really surprised. I didn't think Fish and Wildlife got along well with the feces of dogs, but what difference does it make? Now, I'm going to ask you to keep the record open for two weeks because I am writing a letter to a couple of committees that I know pretty well in Washington, D.C., and I'm watching this, because you have headward erosion, you have destruction of the environment, you have destruction of endangered species, and no one is doing any more than trying to develop. Now, with structural decision, we need these fees to support the staff. We need progressively to add as much as we can and we need the density. Of course, there's an alternative to that, but we can't do that when we have a councilman that's our major developer, it's not possible. But what I'm encouraging you to do is to think about the policy statement you're making. And the reason is simple. The reason I support D.R. Horton is because D.R. Horton would restore a wetland, they already agreed to spend money down there. The wetlands you have next, you ran a sewer line down it when Rapp was mayor and it was never restored. That's the 10 acres Hadley gave you, it was before you moved here, Linda. And they've offered to restore that. I'm not seeing any effort to restore wetlands, preserve the drainage for the refuge. What I'm seeing is us marching on and acting as if we should destroy the wetlands and the riparian corridor that go into the refuge so we can have density. Now, the reason, you have Horton who would do the restoration, because the old man Horton and the son are both really heavy environmentalists, they'd support it. That's not happening. Now, I know Joe Gal would support it because Joe does, that's his mantra, very much, it's his ethic, but he can't do it without you. Now, let me tell you, in the 43 seconds, the lunacy I faced. We have put in a rain system at $100,000. I want you to listen to this. It is treating non-treatable water, you don't have to treat it. I did that because that recharges the water table and your wells and that's where you get your cheap water and that's where you're making your money. Let me tell you, the attitude that we've developed, and it's not a bad guy attitude, go over and look at what's draining Walmart. You have put it at the bottom of a hill and you are draining the entire area and that's why Jim Houck, the refuge manager, quit. He said, this town talks about refuges and I hear it. And they talk about being environmentalists, but you're not. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, Jim. Daniel King?
Good evening, Counsel. Name's Daniel King. Just want to make a brief comment. I'm for the project. I just want to make sure that, I live on Hanley and so I, already everybody knows who lives in that area of the town that the parking's a nightmare and I know Linda's mom does too, just because she lives in the apartments over there. I would like to see, make sure that they do have a permitted parking area and I'm going to look into having a permitted area for our neighborhood too, so, because there's a lot of cars parking on Hanley right now and that's only going to get worse, so. My recommendation would be to make sure that they do have permitted parking for that development, so. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. No more public comment?
We did have a request to keep it open for two weeks for, and we're going to do that, I guess. We will keep it open for two weeks for any kind of letters that you would like to send in or any kind of research you'd like to do. That'd be a good opportunity for you too, Mr. King, to talk to the police chief because he's real good at these parking permit things and he may be able to come back to us and give us more direction on that too. Thank you. Yeah, she's coming back.
Counselor Grant, did you have anything? No?
I just had a couple of things that I wanted to clarify, first, based on the testimony before. The tract K, we did the numbers for the, the cost of that and it was approximately 108,000. By Emilio Design, the applicant prepared that and also we looked into the cost of maintain, maintaining that property by the city and that was approximately, Craig provided about $4,000 per year in maintenance costs that would be borne by the city and that's part of the consideration, I think, that the Parks Board had with, with taking on tract K. Additionally, I'd like to clarify that this is separate from the Cedar Creek Trail, at least for the portions going north. We don't have the actual alignment for the portion 99W to Roy Rogers. We're still in the planning process for that, it's going to go in the creek corridor there, but we're not quite sure how it will align with that, with the trail. But southward, yes, along Minneke Parkway and that intersection, that's going to be part of the Cedar Creek Trail improvement. So the trail will definitely connect southward and into Old Town and I'll give that neighborhood an opportunity to connect with the trails as a whole going, going south. I'd like, and when the trail is going to be developed, they'll have to go through a planning process, they'll have to go to the permitting approval process and that will go through Clean Water Services and they'll review all of those things, especially DSL will also take a look at, at the trail and making sure that is, it is compliant with, with their requirements as well as the city's requirements. And Bob can speak for what we look for in evaluating what type of trail surface will be used in, in that portion.
Bob Gilati, City Engineer. When we are looking at the trail system and the crossing of that, that stream corridor, we're going to be looking at what conditions Clean Water Services, DSL, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and possibly even NIMPs wants to deal with. There are a lot of restrictions that go through crossing stream corridors. The existence of that culvert might not be a condition that they would accept it remaining in place if they're trying to upgrade environmental habitat, stream flow, fish passage conditions. It might be a condition that they have to remove it and replace it with some sort of bridge structure. I'm not saying that's the way it will be, but I'm, I'm saying that, that's why the requirement that they have the crossing and that trail section done at the same time before they get occupancy for the site isn't realistic. It, it's a complex issue and that is why we said, okay, realistically, get most of your stuff done, get it all going, don't hold occupancy, but we'll hold out at least three single-family and one or one multiple family unit because that's proportional to the cost and impact of what that trail system might require as far as a trade-off. So it is a complex system and I think that right now, nobody can say what that configuration will actually look like until we actually, until the applicant actually goes through the permitting process and presents it to the, the appropriate agencies for comment.
Any questions from Counsel?
Have a question.
Go ahead.
So the developer has made the offer, proposal to put in a dog park. And since we don't have a dog park in Shorey, I was just wondering, and I understand this has to go back to the Planning Commission, but what permitting or sign-off from other agencies would they have to get to put a dog park, you know, that close to a greenway, open space, natural area?
I'm not familiar with, if it's not within the vegetated corridor area, then it would be something to, I, I'm not quite sure there's anything land use-wise that would be prohibitive for that use, other than it, it would have to go through and get approval for it. But if you're talking about a technical review for a dog park that has sanitary issues like stormwater runoff, I think we would be looking at that anyway and saying, okay, how do you protect the, the vegetated corridor, make sure all this stuff, you know, whatever, you know, presence, the dogs tend to leave, don't get washed down into the stream corridor and become a biological hazard. I'm sure that Army Corps of Engineers and NIMPs would have a, would have a, a comment about that and probably have design criteria that would have to be incorporated.
And so once somebody puts a dog park in with certain restrictions, maybe near, adjacent to the corridor, who follows up to make sure that that is not happening? Would that fall upon the city or would that fall upon?
If it's a regulatory requirement, that the local jurisdictional agency would probably have to be the, the local agency that would make sure that that is being adhered to.
There'd be some sort of annual inspection or?
Probably, something, something along that line.
Okay.
I'm sure that the conditions under which a regulatory agency such as NIMPs or Clean Water Services, they would put a condition in there stating what, what their conditions are for placement in there and that the city would have to, as part of that agreement, probably oversee it and make sure that it was maintained. We do that with other compliance agreements, things that we have to deal with. Stormwater being a prime example where a treatment facility becomes the city's responsibility, even though the developer might develop and build it, we still have the, the authority and the responsibility of making sure it's maintained correctly.
And where will the stormwater drain for this? I mean, we're taking what is now essentially a field and covering it with hard surface.
The stormwater treatment has a couple of different options. It's a technical issue right now, they could do something onsite, treatment swale onsite, so long as, you know, they have the option of going down and taking it to the existing treatment system if it has capacity or if it can be improved to, to deal with that. Basically, those are technical items that get covered in the, the design process and make sure that we follow the requirements for Clean Water Services, that they meet the permit requirements for discharge. So there's a couple of different options that are open to them.
So given the space of this development, would they normally have their own water quality facility?
It's a possibility. They could have a small, a small system that would deal with it, a combination of systems, so long as the onsite stuff through their private development, which is really the private road, has to be treated before it gets charged to a public system.
Right.
Then the rest of it, the public street, has to be treated before it gets discharged to a stream. How they deal with that, could be with a pond onsite, could be with, we don't accept cartridge systems for the public.
Street.
For the streets. They could do that for a private site, it'd be kind of expensive, I would suggest that most likely in this case, it'd be some sort of pond system, either the existing one or an addition of an additional, smaller one to, to treat this, whatever is necessary to meet the requirements.
Right, so the open space requirements on this chart we have, are they met by these open space areas here outside of tract, whatever tract that is, I forget, C, K, sorry?
Yeah, so the applicant has 21% of the area for open space and there's a requirement for 15%.
So 21, meaning?
All the, even the, the smaller piece parcels are all considered part of the open space area if, if that's what the applicant has identified as open space. So that gets counted in, in the calculation.
Okay, is this part, space part of that? The tract?
Yes, tract K.
So that's part of the 21%?
Mm-hmm.
So if that were to have to come out or a portion of that would have to be a water quality facility?
They would still be okay.
Would they still be okay?
Well, they have 6%, they can play, they have 6% they can play with because they're at 21 and they need 15.
They have about 21,000 square feet, so they have some room to maneuver. I have no idea how big a water quality facility or any of, of that math. My brain doesn't work that way too well in my head, so.
I know, I know it's a technical question, but I thought we were going to see a water quality facility here. So to see a park here was a bit of a surprise, it's a nice surprise, but, I mean, this is just a lot of surface here to drain.
So long as, I, I would suggest that so long as they don't go below the, or they don't violate the limit of 15% that any other space that they have above that could be utilized for stormwater treatment if they see it, that it'd be a benefit to their, to their site to do so in meeting the, the treatment requirements. to their site to do so, in meeting the, the treatment requirements. How they do that is up to them, so long as they meet the, the standards by Clean Water Services, we'll apply it accordingly, make sure that it's met appropriately.
And if I can interject, just, just for the public, because often when a subdivision comes to the council level or to the Planning Commission level, certainly, these details are, are very clearly identified. This is a planned unit development and it's coming to council for the conceptual approval, and ultimately, they're going to be coming back with the more detail at the final detailed plan stage. So, I just want to make sure it's clear that there will, this, you know, staff saying, we don't know, that's, ultimately, we will know and there'll be another public process in which that is reviewed. So, I just want to make that really clear.
And they have, they've met the feasibility, they have a feasible alternative at this time.
There are several options available to them for meeting the, the treatment standards. Like I said, you could use the existing system, make whatever modifications to the, the pipe system to, to bring it up to standard so that they could drain it to it. If it does have extra capacity and can handle it, great. If it doesn't, can they modify that existing system such that they can do it? That's great. If they can augment it by doing some onsite treatment that, in combination with the other system, make sure that they get the treatment capacity, that's fine. If they could do it all onsite, that's good, too. Those are technical details that definitely will come out in the review of the project. They'll have to provide all those stormwater calculations to make sure that they meet those requirements, and we'll go through those very diligently before we accept anything. And I'm sure that Clean Water Services will also have to.
Sure.
Sign off on that as a final, before we, they give a permit for a connection of stormwater services, which they'll have to get. So, if there's any other questions along the stormwater side, that's, that's my basic.
Can you clarify your acronym? DSL is Department of State Lands. I knew that one, but the NIMPs one, I couldn't figure out.
That's National Marine Fisheries Services.
See, I didn't know that one.
They work with fish, wildlife corridors, things like that. So, Army Corps of Engineers, when you're talking about stream corridors and salmon bearing or the potential for salmon bearing streams, they are very much involved with it. And they tend to try and, as a general policy, to improve existing stream corridors such that they get a better habitat out of it. When you have culverts crossing streams or streams going through culverts, they tend to become a natural barrier to that. NIMPs and Army Corps and everybody, they try and say, does it need, can it stay in place? Is it, is it feasible for it to stay in place? Is the stream a fish-bearing type thing? If it's, if it isn't, maybe the, the culvert's fine, leave it in place, not going to handle, not going to hamper anything hydraulically if it works, we're good. It's not a restriction to drainage, fine. If it does become some of those where it impacts wildlife and habitat, they may require removal of it. Don't know until you go through the process.
Right. Thank you.
Any more questions? Does the applicant want to come back up?
I've got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Langer has a question.
Yeah, I may have missed someone in the conversation, but I heard early on something about the, how the garages are used, and I was wondering if that's actually enforceable to restrict how garages are used, or if that was just an idea that was discussed and that was the end of it.
Won't that be in their CCNRs?
It will be part of the CCNRs and they've agreed, they've provided some language with that, which will be reviewed by, by the Planning Commission. But as far as enforceability, that, the onus is on the HOA to make, ensure that that happens. And those, that's the teeth there. It's a contract between those property owners.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
One last question. The parking requirements do not include the garage, correct?
They, they do.
For, for single-family homes, the detached units, they don't include the garages. However, the townhome standards include the garages parking. So, there's a, kind of a dichotomy in the, in the code language. Regardless, they, they meet the minimum standards.
Thank you. The applicant wants to come back up for a moment.
Mayor, can I just ask a procedural question?
Oh, go ahead.
And if, if that's what counsel decides, that certainly councils will. Just procedurally, you've, you've taken applicant testimony, taken public testimony, and then, I'm not sure exactly if you've closed the public hearing and taken staff, staff comments, final questions, but it sounds like you've decided or you will be discussing whether or not to leave the record open again. And as part of your discussions, I just hope that the council will make clear whether or not you're leaving, just continuing the public hearing and at the next meeting allowing additional public testimony, and then applicant rebuttal as well, as well as staff comments, or if you're just leaving the written record open, in which case, the applicant should still be given an opportunity to at least provide some additional rebuttal in writing, if not verbally.
Right.
So, just make sure you're, you're thinking about those things.
They'll be able to have a rebuttal. We're going to leave the, the, it open for two weeks.
Now, are we leaving written and comments, or? There, now, there's, has, you said there had been a request made to leave it open?
Yes.
And was it, was it specific to written, or did it matter?
I think it said written.
He said written, but.
Yeah, my suggestion, because you're fine within 120-day rule, is to keep it open for both written and, and verbal for your next meeting on August 5th.
I think, yeah, that's fair, then the applicant can rebut, have a rebuttal on it.
Is there any way we can save some trees and not reprint, print all of this for the next packet?
We don't need the whole packet again.
We will, we will.
We'll do our best. We just want to make sure that the public, who isn't here tonight, has access to everything.
This is just this. This is the only, this is only what we've been talking about.
Yes.
And we've gotten it a couple, well, you and I have gotten it a few times.
Yeah.
Okay, if you'd like to come up and give a few-minute rebuttal, but we're going to keep the record open.
That was what I was looking for clarification on, was how you were going to handle the record in terms of leaving it open. It sounds like what you're doing is continuing the hearing.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So, we'll just be coming back here in a couple of weeks, and in the meantime, people can write in and, and submit comments. We'll have a chance to look at that before the next hearing, and then we'll reconvene here, it sounds like, and talk more and, and see if there's any other issues, and hopefully, at that point, we'll be done, it sounds like.
Thank you. I think even some counsel had some questions after we saw, I never saw that, didn't pay attention to the dog park thing. And so, it'll give us the two, the two weeks, and then, you know, you'll be coming back to the next council meeting.
Sure. And to help you a little bit with your drainage question that you had, the property slopes to the north and to the east, and so, the low point on our property is at the very top corner up there, and then the yellow highlighted area. And that's a potential location for where we could put a retention pond that could accommodate the site. And so, right now, we're, we're checking out that. There, there is another pond that exists, but that one has some issues in terms of getting there. We have to do a lot of street destruction, I guess, and then restruction of the streets. So, we'd like to not go there if we can avoid it. So, we're trying to look at it onsite, but it would not be where the 9,000-square-foot tract K is. I can assure you that because the topography would not allow it to get over that way. But yeah, that, that's really all I wanted to offer. I just wanted some clarification on how you're going to leave the record open. I have a good understanding now and wanted to offer you some understanding on where the water swell could go to drain the site. So, if you have any questions, I can answer more questions, but that's, that's all I had.
Go ahead.
So, it's Mr. Miller, right?
Yes.
So, just for people in the audience or people who might watch later, the development you intend to build, are you going to build it all at once?
Yes.
So, like, house after house after house?
The format.
So, you're not going to, you're not going to sell a lot, build a house, sell a lot, build a house?
No, we'll, we'll do it.
All at once?
For essentially the, the way a production home builder would do it, which is to just build them out and, and sell them as they become available. And hopefully, the sales have been pretty good in this area, so we're anticipating that, that will continue and we'll probably be selling and building at the same time.
So, you pour all the streets first and then?
We'll put in all the public infrastructure, get that bought off on, and start building homes. We'll probably have one, probably four-plex started during the construction of the, while the construction of the site is going on, we'll try and get one model unit going. And so, we'll talk with staff on whether that's a, a four-plex, a three-plex, a, a single-family home and figure that out. But we'll have that started while all the rest of the infrastructure is going in. We'll get it all bought off on, we'll final plat the site, and then we'll be, you know, building homes with all the public infrastructure in place.
So, I'm just wondering what measures you'll take. Obviously, we have a lot of people living in that apartment development just to the east of you, sort of what measures you'll take to, we've had other developments where we've had a lot of dust and dirt concerns, and staff has gone out to, to meet with the developers. And I'm not implying that you haven't, you know, had measures in place, but they are really close to a, a large group of people, in addition to some businesses that are just south of there, so.
We'll be taking all the normal measures in terms of silt fencing. We'll probably have a water, depending on the time of year, the conditions, you know, we want to keep the dust down, so we'll have a water truck that we can use to water the area to keep the dust down. But it'll be your, your standard construction project with all the measures that people require from all the different agencies to address those concerns that have come up over the years. So, you know, there's a lot of safeguards now that are required that were never required before to make sure that those issues are addressed.
And will you have a site manager that people can maybe contact if they have questions or concerns?
We, we will have a construction manager. He won't be necessarily on the site 24/7.
Sure.
But he'll be visiting the site weekly, if not two or three times a, a week, to make sure, you know, we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
And, and I will also be available for people to call. So, my name is on the application and usually gets spread around when people start asking questions.
Well, thank you. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Yes. Thank you.
Now, we're moving on to council comments.
Do they need to make a motion to continue the hearing?
Yeah, we'll make a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing regarding reconvening on August 5th. That's my motion.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did he, I couldn't hear. Counselor Langer.
Counselor Langer, you are in favor of that?
Yeah, aye.
Thank you.
Oh, since, go ahead to Counselor Langer first on the, if he wants to, on the council comments.
Counselor comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, busy summer schedule, there's a lot going on. The YMCA, Executive Dresser, Executive Director Renee Brousse has been selected for promotion to Regional Director, much in part due to outstanding management of our very own Sherwood YMCA. So, a big congratulations to Renee and her entire family. The YMCA, we'll have a booth at the Robin Hood Festival this weekend, so come and visit them to learn the many things that the YMCA offers here in Sherwood and abroad. There's a dual relay on Friday, July 25th at Sherwood High School at 6:00 PM. And there's, July 26th, at Our Table Co-op, there is a blueberry pick for the YMCA. That's on Saturday, the 26th. And there's a family triathlon also with the barbecue on Saturday, August 16th at 10:00 AM. The barbecue will go from 11:00 to 1:00 PM. Again, that's hosted by the YMCA. Now, on to the Chamber of Commerce. They also have, well, they have a new executive director, so I believe I heard Lana Cole testifying today, saying thanks for the City of Sherwood's help with the annual dinner. So, welcome Lana, you can go visit her over at the Chamber office. And the Chamber Golf Tournament is scheduled for Thursday, September 18th at Merryweather Golf Club. That's September 18th. So, get that on your calendars early. July 29th, there's a mixer at Sweet Story. Those are usually AM events. I don't have the time on that one, but it's probably an AM mixer. And there are some new members this month, the Smockville Montessori, Wild Horse Mountain Ranch, and Stella and Dot. So, welcome all three of those to Sherwood's Chamber of Commerce. And the next Chamber Breakfast is in the, in August. It's hosted by the Sherwood School District at the Sherwood High School Commons. And lastly, I'd like to let the community know, and of course, many folks know that last month, Sherwood lost a, a close member of our community, Jen Varanazan. Her family asked me to thank the entire Sherwood community for three years of support during her fight against cancer. Jen was the founder and organizer of the annual Friar Trout Run, where she will be alive forever and greatly missed. Unfortunately, most of us have been affected by cancer in some way. One way we, as a community, can help fight this disease is by participating in the American Cancer Society's Sherwood's Relay for Life on August 2nd, starting at 10:00 AM at Sherwood High School. So, again, the Varanazan family deeply thanks the Sherwood community for all their heartfelt support over the past three years. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Counselor Grant?
I've done.
Counselor Folsom?
Counselor Folsom.
Sorry, I thought you were working your way down.
I was, but it's no big deal.
I was writing down so I didn't forget anything. The Cultural Arts Commission, the Sherwood Cultural Arts Commission is helping support a booth down at Music on the Green with the support of the VPA and the SFA. We're offering not only a raffle, but hopefully some glimpse at the community center renderings. So, be sure to stop by that each Wednesday night from 6:30 to 8:30. Last week was the kickoff and it was fantastic. Saw the mayor there. And we also, the Cultural Arts Commission is, are doing a movies series. We took a community survey, and I was surprised by this, but others were not. 70% of the individuals who took the survey, or families that took the survey, asked that the movies be moved back to Stella Olson Park. So, from the plaza. So, they will be moved back down to Stella Olson Park this year. We do have sponsor, Gardner Team, and we appreciate them very much for stepping up and being our presenting sponsor for the movies. I do not believe that we have selected the movies for sure, but they were voted on as well, and we will probably announce those at our next meeting. Is that right?
Yeah, I believe they're on the website. They have been selected.
Oh, they have been selected. I've been out of town. We were out of town.
What are they?
Frozen, Despicable Me Too, Lego Movie, and Goonies.
So, Frozen.
But not necessarily in that order.
Yeah, Frozen, Despicable Me Too, the Lego Movie, and Goonies. And I'm hoping that it's their Frozen sing-along. It is regardless of whether the birds are on. The other thing that we had some community members come and request support with is an Italian festival that would be happening, the Ferragusta Festival, on August 15th. And the Cultural Arts Commission has offered to just support them through that process. This is the first year of doing that. It's a very famous Italian festival, and the Voices for the Performing Arts is actually their sponsor this year for the Italian group as they organize their nonprofit. But there will be lots of fun events, an olive oil demonstration, there will be Italian food, there will be a Fiat to be taken pictures in, and apparently, there will be some donkeys because donkeys are very important in Italy. And there is a, an animal therapy group that has offered to bring in some donkeys that will not be on the plaza, they will be in the field. So, this weekend, the Robin Hood Festival, 60th anniversary, the nighting starts at six, on, I think it's 6:30 on Friday night. I have to also announce that Sandy Wallace was here a couple of months ago, talking about the history of the archery competition and the Robin Hood Festival, and you can find those artifacts displayed in the museum right now. She set that all up. We are indeed having visitors from our sister city in England, and they will be at the archery competition, which kicks off Saturday morning at 8:30 at the Ridge's campuses, the 19th and the 20th, will be the actual archery competition. The parade starts at 10:00, and there are lots of fun activities, and you can go onto their website and see that. In addition, the VPA is doing their encore performances of Beauty and the Beast in Canary Plaza with Tea with Bell on Friday and Saturday this week. So, let's see, I think. let's see, I think that is all of my things, I wanted to mention that I appreciate the support in going to...
Councilor Folsom, you forgot the Senior Center and Boy Scout Pancake Breakfast?
Oh, yes.
Oh, I was out of town when you had your meeting, so when is that, Mr. Stewart?
Saturday.
This Saturday, this Saturday where?
Senior Center.
At what time?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, this Saturday, the Boy Scouts partner with the Senior Center Pancake Breakfast, and I was getting to that, when you had your steering committee meeting, I was still out of town, as you knew, last month, I called in from Washington DC where Kristin Schweitzer and I were doing some work with our, with the CFM lobbying company, and we met with the EDA, the EPA, the NEA, and the USDA, three times, and our congressional delegation, and I learned a lot, and we'll be talking to council about that later, but I wanted to announce that we had such a good connection and networking time, that Kristin Schweitzer, this very weekend, is acting as panelist for the USDA on one of their grant cycles, not that she didn't have anything else to do, so, congratulations to you on that, we had a very successful trip, and I, the one thing I wanted to tell the citizens that I learned, our representatives and senators need to hear from you, we need, it's easy, email, you call, you will get a response, but that was the universal thread I saw in every communication, is they want and need to hear from all of us, and they're not, and I had just heard that from Senator, or Representative Davis here in the state, so I just wanted to carry that back, and it was great to meet with them, and we're appreciative of the time, and they happened to fly back on the same plane as Kristin, so, thank you so much for your time, Kristin, 'cause it was a busy time for you, and it's a very busy time for our community, but it's also a great time of year to live in Sherwood.
Thank you, Councilor Clark.
I actually had a question for Councilor Folsom on the Italian Festival, have they decided on a location, time?
Oh, yes, Canary Plaza, August 15th, 4:00 to 7:00, and then, you can walk down the street to Stella Olson Park at the movie, you'll see on their posters, it said, "And join us for a movie after," that decision had not yet been made, because they were really good about getting their artwork done quickly, so...
Thank you, I just, I didn't hear a time, so I just wanted to make sure that I asked that, so, a lot of what I was gonna say was covered, so I'm very glad to hear that, I wanted to give a shout-out to the Wildcat Haven, had their dog walk on the 28th, I had the pleasure of attending, and I wanted to thank many, many volunteers that took over my booth, so that I could go to Jennifer Branazan's memorial, it was a beautiful service, and I just appreciate the help, so that I was able to do both of them, the Wildcat Haven had inclement weather, poor things, but lots of people still brought their dogs out, and it was a lot of fun, and a lot of fun faces, and I wanted to give a big shout-out to Jennifer Flanagan from Nature's Pet for organizing that, and for starting something that I think is gonna be a tradition here in Sherwood, there's obviously, as we've heard tonight, lots and lots of support, and owners of dogs, and what better way than to support the big cats by bringing our dogs out and having fun, so it was, it was a great day, we had, Mayor Middleton and I had a great time at the 4th of July Woodhaven Parade, so I wanted to thank Woodhaven for having us, it was very, very fun, and last week, my children had the opportunity to do the Missoula Children's Theater in Pinocchio, and so, I wanted to thank the Foundation for the Arts, the Sherwood Foundation for the Arts, for having that program, they've had it for many, many years, and I know that my children have enjoyed it for many, many years, and in fact, my 12-year-old said, "I wanna do this until I'm not allowed to do this anymore, Mom, how many years can I do this?" And, and so, she just had a ball, even being one of the older children in the group, and my son did too, so I just wanted to thank that foundation and the people that put on the program, 'cause it's a, it's a great, great program. I also had the opportunity to attend the Special Olympics Bocce Cup to kick off their Summer Games in Newburgh, it was fantastic, and I thanked them greatly for having lots and lots of tents, 'cause it was smoking hot, and got a little bit of sun, as you can see, even with the tents and sunscreen, but it was, it was a really beautiful event, and so, I wanted to thank Special Olympics for having us, I, oh, I wanted to remind everyone on the, the library summer program is still going on, 2:00 PM on Tuesdays, great fun, right out on Canary Plaza, and I saw a nice, big group today, and we've only got a couple more to go, so don't miss them, they are not to be missed, bring, bring a blanket, and come on down and see the great summer programs. Oh, I wanted to announce that for the Main Street General Meeting will be this Thursday at 4:00 PM at the Rebecca Lodge, that's the, I'm, the third, third Thursday, 4:00 PM, Rebecca Lodge, I think that's it for me?
Council President Henderson?
Thank you, I have a number of announcements, as you know, Robin Hood is coming up this weekend, 60th anniversary, so it's a very exciting and historic event, I wanted to recognize that some folks who, those of us who have been knighted in the past, see it as a great honor, we have some people in our midst, one of our Public Works employees, Felipe, is being honored, is being knighted, so is Russell Griffin, who is a member of the Planning Commission and an Old Town business owner, and somebody who is our city recorder is also being knighted, Sylvia Murphy, yay, and I think there, the list is on the Robin Hood site, so there are many great people, citizen volunteers, Tess Keys, who's from the American Legion, and John Niebergall from the Sherwood High School, so that's always a fun event, I think the knighting starts at 6:00, though.
Yeah, it may, yeah, I can remember.
And it's over in Veterans Park, if anybody's interested in attending, over in Veterans Park, it's a lot of fun, and always a great event, my other announcements are, I was going to mention the Boy Scout Breakfast at the Senior Center, 'cause my children will be serving, if they don't eat everything before they serve it, and thank you, Councilor Clark, for the mention of Missoula Children's Theater, that actually is a great partnership between the Foundation and the Cultural Arts Commission, we share that responsibility, we each find host families, we come to registration, and that's a great partnership, one of the reasons that that partnership works really well is, many years ago, a previous council granted, a grant to the Foundation which allowed us to set up a website, and that is the website that we use, we don't utilize the city website for enrollment, and I think that saves a lot of staff time, and that would have not happened had we not received a grant back then, and lastly, Les Mis is, we have an annual summer live performance down at Stella Olson Park, it's always the weekend after Robin Hood, and that will be Les Mis, that is next weekend, or it starts on Thursday, goes Friday, Saturday, and tickets are available at sherwoodarts.org, we have a amazing cast and crew, most of them live in Sherwood, we have some, some new people from surrounding areas who've come in and enriched that experience for cast and crew, and wanted to thank the city for all their help, it's a very difficult venue to bring everything down there every year, and they've been great at, at working with us, and helping us make sure that we're good, good partners and good stewards of the park, and every year, I appreciate the assistance I receive from, from Kristin Schweitzer, and Jennifer, and Public Works Craig Sheldon, who I think is in the back, and that is all I have, thank you.
I only have two things, one of them is, I'll be reading the proclamation to the Robin Hood Festival, I have it here, so everybody come down and listen to that, that's just before the knighting, and I wanted to thank, we have a star in the, in the audience there, it's my club president from my motorcycle club, he's the council president of Malala, so I wanna thank him, and I wanna thank everybody from my club who came, and I really appreciate the support, so, thank you guys, so...
And could we have an update on the Community Center?
Sure.
From Tom, or...
I'll add that to the list, so, I'll try to be quick, Mayor and Council, Kristin, our new library director doesn't appear to be next, has she left?
She had to leave, because she has a four-month baby at home, so...
But I thought, so she'll probably be here at your next meeting, we wanted to, as we normally do with new staff, introduce her to the community and to the council, I think a number of you, if not all of you, have met her, but she just started this week, so, a number of issues were raised by Ms. Belov, I think we wanna talk about the tree, so, Julia, can you talk about the tree and what's going on later this month?
Sure, and I did send an email to council, and there is something on the website, the headline is "Prominent Tree in Old Town to Be Removed," and we do not have a historic tree ordinance, we do have tree regulations that regulate the removal of trees on private property associated with a development application, and tree removal on private property not associated with a development application, but there's an exemption of, basically, you can remove up to five trees, or 10% of the trees on-site, whichever is more, without a reason, and that said, the, the tree over there at second, on second, and near second and third, at 16001 Southwest Second Street, is very large, very prominent, something, you know, I think that you will notice its removal, and because of that, we wanted to make sure that the council and the public was aware of that, and the property owner, again, while they have the right to remove that tree, has not made that decision lightly, they've actually been talking with staff for, for several years, and we've known that there have been issues during storm events, there have actually been some pretty significant property damage, as well as, I think at one time, a tree in the middle of the road, so some city concerns as well, and they have, over the years, done pruning, and had arborists come in and advise, and, and my understanding is that they're just at the point where that's not, it's not doing what it needs to do to eliminate their liability and their concerns and the hazard to that, that property, so they have made the decision to remove the tree at a, at a fairly substantial cost to them, I don't have the actual numbers, but a tree that size is expensive regardless, and then, there's going to be some traffic, they've got flaggers planned throughout the area to make sure that the vehicles can continue to get by safely without tree limbs falling on, on cars, so, any questions on top of that?
Has that date been announced? Or at least the tentative date?
I believe, it's, we, up on the website, we say it is expected to be July 29th to the 30th, so it'll be a couple of days at the end of the month.
Okay, I'm gonna have Tom address the question about the Community Center update, and then also, Ms. Belov talked about the speed study, or whatever, and he's got some data that he pulled up that he wanted to share with not only the council, but to, with the community, so, Mr. Pessamir.
Sure, I'll, I'll take the speed on Lincoln Street first, so we got a request to go out and take a look at the speed, and the police department was really quick to get out there, we wanted to get out there before school was out, 'cause you typically get better results while school's still in session, so, back in May, they went out for six days, collected speed data, they put the loops specifically in a place where they could catch the highest speeds on Lincoln Street, and just for your information, the average speed was 24.9 miles per hour, and I'll break that down into the different categories, so, 0 to 15 was 1.5% of the total traffic, 15 to 20 miles per hour was 10.9% of the total traffic, 20 to 25 miles per hour is 41.3% of the total traffic, 25 to 30 was 32.6% of the total traffic, 30 to 35 miles per hour was 11.1% of the total, 35 to 40 was 2.2% of the total, and 40 to 45 was 0.3%, so, over, over 35 miles per hour would be 2.5% of the total traffic that was on the road, so I just wanted to give that information to you guys, so you could, you could have that, as far as the Community Center goes, I think we talked about this before, we were starting to get behind schedule, we had a conversation with the contractor, the contractor responded very well, they got multiple subs on the site at the same time, they were doing multiple things, and they're rapidly making up the schedule, as you can see, they have all the concrete block up, they have put most of the wood structure up for the classroom area, as well as the retail area, they'll be working on the front area shortly, with the walls and structure there, and they have a lot of the slab poured, and when you pour the slab, that means you have all the underground electrical and plumbing done as well, so, we're pleased with the progress that they're making, and we believe that we're still on target to open this up at the very end of this, this calendar year, so...
Any questions on that, or anything else, before we wrap up tonight's meeting?
Thank you.
I have trouble hearing the average speed on Lincoln?
24.9 miles per hour.
24, 24.9.
Did you have a question, or?
No, no, just gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, but...